Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Council Chambers, to City Hall, and to meeting of the Los Angeles City Council today, Friday, March 22, 2002. If I can ask an order, please. We'd like to begin with the council meeting for today. We have six members present at the current time. We do need ten members for a quorum. However, this being Friday, it is customary that we begin with presentation and special recognitions. This is also our annual Pioneer Women's Day. So we have a special ceremony and series of presentations honoring women, great women of the great city of Los Angeles. I want to welcome all of you who are here for Pioneer Women's Day. We do have a number of presentations as well as an agenda to take care of. So colleagues, if you'll bear with me, what I'd like to do is acknowledge first the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, James Hahn, for a presentation. We also have two non-Pioneer Women's Day presentations to be conducted today. We will quickly and briefly go through the council agenda, if we have achieved a quorum at that time, and then go on with Pioneer Women's Day. So to begin with the presentations, if I can call on the mayor of our great city, Mayor James Hahn.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. Councilman Garcetti and I are here today to honor the volunteers, the teams, and the walkers of the Seventeenth Annual AIDS Walk Los Angeles. Over 20,000 people walked last October and raised $2.5 million for AIDS Project Los Angeles and 35 other community organizations. Continuing commitment of the organizers and all who participate have made a real difference over the years in the fight against HIV and AIDS, and they deserve a big round of applause. We have with us today the event manager of AIDS Walk LA, Lisa Walter. Lisa, would you come forward?
On behalf of the community of people dedicated to the fight against AIDS, I want to particularly thank the mayor and the city council for its support of AIDS Walk Los Angeles and the recognition that AIDS is an ongoing public health crisis. The AIDS Walk raises between $2.5 and $3.5 million each year to support the vital services of AIDS Project Los Angeles and 35 other community-based AIDS organizations. This year, you might, last year, let me say, you might recall that the AIDS Walk was particularly challenged, as was the rest of this country, as a result of the horrible events of September 11th. AIDS Walk Los Angeles took place just three weeks later, and because of the events of September 11th, had to completely move its venue and its route from the traditional city of Los Angeles route to a combined route between the city of Los Angeles and the city of West Hollywood. I want to particularly thank the mayor and the city of Los Angeles for adapting to that change so well. Your people are so professional and were such a great help with that, and for working with the city of West Hollywood to make that happen. AIDS Walk Los Angeles is truly a tradition of caring here in Los Angeles, and the dedication in the year 2001 of making it happen really demonstrated that we are never so strong as when we are faced with adversity. Thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you again this year for another AIDS Walk Los Angeles.
AIDS Walk wouldn't happen without a lot of volunteers, any of the council members who wanted to join us on this. I know Jack Weiss and Tom LaMaj and others have been walkers every year, but the volunteers also make this happen. We wanted to recognize them. Elaine Abraham, who walked to the AIDS Walk office nearly every week during the 24-week campaign. Pearl Frankel, who volunteered at AIDS Walk LA, Project Angel Food. Pat Lundgren, Ed Ovaduke, and so many other volunteers who made this possible. But we also understand it's about a walk, and it's about raising money, and so we wanted to bring before the city council today the top individual fundraiser raisers. Charles McWells, who surprised himself with his final fundraising total, $14,512. And our top walker, Cynthia Park, who over the last eight years has raised nearly a half a million dollars for AIDS Project Los Angeles. This year, she raised $66,640 at AIDS Walk. Cynthia. You get this as your first-place fundraising walker. Cynthia, thank you. And the final group of awards goes to the top teams. Kids Who Care comprised almost exclusively of teenagers and almost teenagers, raised $31,000. Accepting that award are Sam Beckerman, Joanna Kabat, Teddy Sideman, and Willie Purleider. This year, we're proud to give Fox Entertainment Group the very first fundraising excellence award. Their leader, Janie Friedman. Janie. The fifth-place fundraising team award goes to, in memory of Clay Howell team. They raised $37,451. Accepting the award are Mark Howell, Susan Edelst, Rich Esra, and Cynthia Ettinger. I'm real proud of the fourth-place team, the city of Los Angeles employees, who raised $38,000. Presenting that award to Catherine Kirkendall from the mayor's office. All right, all right, and I walk too, that's right. The third-place fundraising team is the county of LA. Are they here? They're not here. Well, we'll beat them this year, then. Our second-place team goes to Team AOL Time Warner. Team AOL Time Warner raised $42,956. Accepting the award are Robert Balthazar, Dean Lee, Leslie Thurman, Kelly Erdang, and Marian Velasquez. AOL Time Warner. And the first-place fundraising team is being presented to DreamWorks. This team once again demonstrated amazing fundraising, raising $74,384. Accepting the award are again from DreamWorks, Michelle Davis, Barbara Simidi, Greece Ridgway, Diane Waldman, and our top fundraising walker, Cynthia Park.
Shrek Ears in our team t-shirt.
Oh, Shrek Ears, yeah. I look so good in those, too. Thank you. Yeah, I know. Not today. And one final special award, with your permission, we would like to give it to Aaron Harkins for being our outstanding team coordinator. Aaron? Thank you. Again, thank you, everybody who was involved with an extremely successful AIDS Walk last year. It was a challenge since we moved the route, and it was a big challenge, but I think everybody came through dramatically, and again, it has made a big difference in people living with HIV and AIDS. And that's, that's the big message that we've realized over the years, is that people are living. They're not just dying anymore. People are living. We need to help them get on with their lives and live their lives to the fullest, and AIDS Walk LA has been a big part of celebrating that and celebrating the courage and conviction of everybody who's involved with helping people who are suffering this challenge in their lives, but getting past it, and for all of us who appreciate the ways that all of us can help in doing so. So I want to thank everybody connected with AIDS Walk LA. We'll look for another successful one later on this year. Thank you.
Before the conclusion, Mr. Hahn, before the conclusion of the presentation, Mr. Labusch, I'd like to say...
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. It's great to have all the people in AIDS Walk here. I also want to remember the great work of Judas Chester, our dear friend, who for years ago at Paramount Picture, that's right, really started it all out, but I want to recognize someone he didn't get any recognition today, but Steve Daviano, right here. Steve, stand up. Give him a big hand. He is the driving force behind AIDS Walk. It does such a wonderful job, and I'm sure everybody applaud him on all the work. Thank you so much.
Mr. Garcetti.
I also wanted to recognize, from my office, Baitzar Tomasi, who, when the venue did change, which West Hollywood was really stepped up to the plate and made it possible, that transition. We look forward, with Paramount's help, to having the Walk returned to 13th District next year. We hope so, but I just wanted to praise Baitzar for her great work as well. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chair recognizes the council member Hahn for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I am very pleased to welcome here to Los Angeles a very distinguished guest. We have this morning, from Washington DC, from President Bush administration, the Deputy Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Mr. Alfonso Jackson. And he is here today in Los Angeles to discuss housing issues that are important to all of us and all of the communities and neighborhoods that we represent, and the continued positive involvement of HUD in improving housing opportunities for all residents of Los Angeles. He is the perfect person for this job. He has a, he has a great resume, but Deputy Secretary Jackson is a noted authority in public housing and community development. Before his appointment by President Bush, Mr. Jackson served in executive roles in the housing authorities of Dallas, Washington DC, and St. Louis. I had a very good meeting with Deputy Secretary Jackson before council where I made him very well aware of our issues here in Los Angeles, our housing crisis, our willingness to want to move forward in our, in our housing authority projects, to make homeownership our number-one priority. I expressed to him our problems with our Section 8 vouchers and how so many of our people are not able to even use those vouchers, and he's agreed to try to help us work on that. So I'm very pleased to have him here today. I want him to address us and say a few words, but I must say I'm very encouraged by what he has committed to in terms of helping us here in Los Angeles with this very important issue. Deputy Secretary Alfonso Jackson.
Mr. President, thank you, Councilwoman Hahn, for that introduction. It's a pleasure to be in the fine city of Los Angeles, California, this morning. I would like to commend the newly-elected councilwoman from District 2, Wendy Grillo, who is a former member of the HUD family. Wendy, HUD experience will prove invaluable to the council as it endeavors to afford more affordable housing and economic development for the citizens of Los Angeles. Expanding homeownership to more Americans, especially minorities, is an important priority of President Bush, Secretary Martinez, and myself. We entered 2002 with homeownership at an all-time high. The administration has launched an expanded number of initiatives to increase low and moderate income homeownership that will benefit not only this country, but specifically Los Angeles. HUD is making unprecedented effort to protect the nation's most vulnerable, the homeless, the elderly, and those physically or mentally handicapped, to ensure increased affordable rental and subsidized housing. HUD will continue to support the community, both economically, development, and fair housing. For example, this year, Los Angeles will receive $145 million in community planning and development funds alone. I want to commend the mayor and the city for the recent creation of a $100 million affordable housing trust fund to develop and preserve affordable housing throughout Los Angeles. I can assure you that we will be working with you all to make sure that this is a success. In closing, I just simply want to say on behalf of the president and on behalf of Secretary Martinez, that we are here today to demonstrate our commitment to the cities of this country, and specifically to Los Angeles. Thank you so much for having me here, and I look forward to coming back again. And again, thank you, Councilwoman Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Thank you, Councilmember Hahn. Chair recognizes Mr. Labusch for an introduction.
Mr. President, members of the council, we have someone very special, everybody's special in this council chambers today, but someone very special, we have the great granddaughter of the great William Mulholland, who I'd like to ask, may Catherine Mulholland, please come forth right here. David Oberflan, please come forth, if you would, of the president of Water and Power Associates. Council members, you have on your desk a wonderful book that is a gift given by the Water and Power Associates. It's just a not-for-profit organization, and it's a story about Los Angeles and William Mulholland, written by Catherine Mulholland, the granddaughter of the greatest Irish immigrant who ever came to Los Angeles. And for a few brief words, please welcome Catherine Mulholland.
As always, it's a great pleasure to be here. I was here as a little girl. I was here when my grandfather lay in state in the rotunda of the city hall in 1935. I feel very connected to this place, and it's an honor to be here today. I just have one thing to say. It was 100 years ago today that the city of Los Angeles regained control of its water rights after having, for 35 years, lost them to a private water company. When the citizens finally voted to buy their water company back, my grandfather, William Mulholland, was the superintendent of that water company. He said at the time, when the city bought back its water, they bought me with it. And if he were here today, he would say, hold on to that water, never relinquish those rights to anyone or anybody else again. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of the council, the Los Angeles Water and Power Associates, Inc., is a private, independent, nonprofit, public interest corporation. We basically have two goals. We were founded in 1971 for the purpose of providing information to public officials and the public generally on water and power matters, and also to continue promoting the benefits of municipal ownership of water and power. This is the 100th anniversary of the Department of Water and Power, and it's time that people in Los Angeles puffed out their chests and said, this is really a marvelous accomplishment. But if you look at 1870, this was 5,000 people, a little tiny village, and now the largest municipal utility in the country that makes all of this possible. And part of our job is to try and remind you of that, and that's why we've taken part of our funds and purchased Catherine's book, so that hopefully each of you will get a better understanding of how water came to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, and we thank you for this great gift of your book. We thank William Mulholland and Scattergood for the power and, and the great water that drives the great city of the angels. And we also want to thank Dr. Hoffman from Valley College, who's a professor of history, and a good book on water. But thank you, Madam President. Usually we give proclamations on Friday, but today we got the book thrown at us. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Labusch. Certainly a living history of the city of Los Angeles. Members, we have achieved a quorum. I'll ask a clerk now to please call the roll. Berndsen, Galandri, Garcetti, Hahn, Holden, Labusch, Miskowski, Chaco, Perry, Raisford, Thomas, Weiss, Signum, Adia, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President? Thank you very much. We now officially leave to take up the business of the day. Colleagues, as I mentioned... Colleagues, as I mentioned earlier, if it is also your pleasure, let us sweep through the agenda, call any special items. I think there may be very few today. And then proceed with the presentations of Pioneer Women's Day. Mr. Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of amendments.
Ms. Hahn moves.
Ms. Perry seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves.
And Ms. Miskowski seconds.
On the regular agenda, items numbers 1 through 7 are items noticed for public hearing.
1 through 7.
Are items for which public hearings have been held.
Public hearing has been held, items 1 through 7. Members wishing to call any specials? Items 1 through 7. Seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Items 1 through 7 are approved.
Items numbers 8 through 19 on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And I have not received any requests from members of the public to be heard on those items. We shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Items 8 through 19, members, any specials? Items 8 through 19, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Item number 8, the ordinance will be held over for a second reading on April 23rd.
Thank you.
On the continuation agenda, items numbers 20 and 21, motions are required inasmuch as the two reports on one file. Each one has a planning and land use management committee report as well as communication from the chair of Big Fashion Technology and General Services.
Items 20 and 21, Chair recognizes Mr. Ridley Thomas. Call both of those special? Okay, call both of those special and let those on the desk.
Mr. President, I understand there is a reconsideration of item number 26 from Wednesday.
Yes, that comes from me. You mind explaining that one?
Emotions are required to reconsider the matter.
Colleagues, without objection, I'd like to move reconsideration of item number 26 from last Wednesday's agenda. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, let's hold on to the desk. Let's go back to the presentations if we can. Is that the end of the agenda?
It's accepted for public comment.
Okay. Coming back to the presentation portion of today's agenda, the Chair recognizes Councilmember of the 5th District and Chair of the Arts Health and Humanities Committee, Mr. Jack Weiss, to lead us through Pioneer Women's Day. Fourth with on 17, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. We're here to kick off Women's History Month and to honor a set of very special, very accomplished women with very diverse backgrounds, very diverse set of professional and community accomplishments from throughout the city of Los Angeles. We have each nominated and selected a pioneering woman from each of our districts to come into City Council today and to be recognized by the city of Los Angeles for their achievements and for the important example that they have set for all of us. I'd like to give you a little bit of history about Women's History Month, colleagues. You know, it's interesting. It didn't begin all that long ago. It began in 1978. It was started by a Northern California school district that saw the need to recognize the achievements of pioneering women. And the city of Los Angeles since 1988 has participated. And I'm sure if any of us have anything to say about it, it will continue to participate in the years and years ahead. I'd like to introduce for a moment Paula Petrotta, the Executive Director of the Commission on the Status of Women in the City of Los Angeles, to explain to the City Council and to the people watching at home how each of these remarkable women was selected. Paul?
Thank you. As you know, this is the 14th year that the Commission has joined with the City Council in honoring the women from our communities in this important month. Since before the ratification of the US Constitution, women have worked to ensure that America's rich cultural, social, and education system honors the rich and diverse people who have put their lives on the line for us in many ways throughout history. The theme for Women's History Month this year is Women Sustaining the American Spirit. And I think someone mentioned this morning about the tragic events of 9/11. And I could not help notice on that day, women firefighters, women police officers, women emergency personnel, and women volunteers responding to that tragic event in our history. One poignant moment is watching a little boy waving goodbye to his mother as she went off to war. These are the women that make history. And the women here today are making history every day in our community. They are unsung heroes and heroines. And we have really worked closely with the City Council in bringing them to light today, to wish them luck, to thank them for all the work that they do every single day, not just today, but every day for us, for our children, for our families, for our communities. So we're very pleased to join with the City Council today in honoring 15 terrific women and thanking them for the work that they do for us.
Thank you, Paula. I would, I'd like to begin the presentations, colleagues, by introducing to you my honoree, Sandy Goldman, who's accompanied by her husband Ron. Come on up, guys. This is really terrific. And I think it is, it's especially fitting that as we stand up here, we recognize that a pioneering woman who has a real tie to the historical past of this city, Catherine Mulholland, is in this room with us today. And she was just honored by Mr. Labadj. How fitting that she would be with us here today. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Sandy and I'd like to tell you why I selected her as the award recipient from my district. Sandy is a pioneering woman in the area of government. She served as the Chief of Staff to State Assembly Member Robert Klein, then to State Senator Allen Robbins, and then to State Senator David Roberti. And she really cleared the way for women to serve in significant leading managerial capacities in local government, in elected government, in the state of California, and in Los Angeles. Now, that is an important thing in and of itself, but it's important to me for a personal reason. You see, she became, I think she became Chief of Staff for the first time in 1976. Is that correct? 1976. Well, that was the year that then-California Governor Jerry Brown appointed my mother to the California Municipal Court. That's not exactly what I meant. And it doesn't seem like that long ago, but when that happened, it was still fairly unusual for women to be appointed to the bench. When Sandy became Chief of Staff, it was extraordinarily unusual, if not unheard of, for women to serve as Chief of Staff in an elected official's office. In fact, I remember that very shortly after Governor Brown appointed my mother to the bench, somebody ran against her and merely because she was a woman. Because it was so unusual to be a woman in such an important capacity just a generation ago. Well, Sandy helped clear the way for so many great women after her in local government and in elected office as well. She's been extraordinarily active in the community. She has dedicated herself to many organizations such as the Los Angeles Children's Museum, the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, the Anti-Defamation League, the California Film Commission, the Jewish Federation. And she's served in so many local capacities throughout the Valley, including service on the Tarzana Chamber of Commerce. She's owned her own company and she's presently Director of Community Affairs for Browning Fair Industries. So I am extraordinarily honored to kick off Pioneer Women's Day here in the city of Los Angeles by presenting to you my award recipient from the 5th District, Sandy Goldman. Sandy?
Well, the way Jack told that story, I thought maybe I could be, I'm old enough to be his mother. At any rate, there is something really, really exciting about being in City Hall. And I'm truly honored that Jack chose me as the 5th District Pioneer Woman. I love what I do. I love all of you. I know many, many of you. I used to know all 15 of you, but I guess I don't anymore. At any rate, I'm extremely proud to be part of Los Angeles and I thank each and every one of our council members for doing such a great job. And I am really proud to be a pioneer woman. Thank you.
Colleagues, I know each and every one of you have somebody very important and special you would like to honor. What I would suggest, if it's all right with you, is we'll just go around the horseshoe. I know one of my colleagues needs to leave early. Okay? Then if we, maybe we should start with Ms. Galanter? If she's ready. I know she has a presentation on behalf of her district and I believe on behalf of Mr. Burton's district as well. Okay, one added two. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, Mr. President, councilmembers. This is, you know, we do this every year, but this is really a special honor for me. My honoree is here, the 6th District. It's my staff member, one of my first staff members, one of the only two from the beginning who's still with me. Been here all this time, Audrey King. Now, for those of you who don't recognize that name, this is Wendy. And we'll explain that in a minute. There we go. Okay, I guess I'll take this one. The reason that Audrey is my Pioneer Woman of the Year is not just that she works for me and I love her. It's that I think that Audrey really is a role model for lots of young women. And I hope that there are some watching and there's someone who will see this tape who will pay attention and learn from this. Audrey is the youngest of five children. She grew up in Los Angeles. She went to junior high school and high school in Watts. Like lots of kids who started out in the projects, she was, she hung around with some people she probably shouldn't have. And she told me once that of all her group of friends, everybody dropped out of school, but she finished school. And she has been finishing things ever since. She's been plowing ahead. She had health problems when she was a child. She had health problems when she was an adult. But she plows ahead, she takes care of business, she takes care of life. And she's really an inspiration to me. When she, it gets better, it gets better. Hold on, it really does, it gets better. This is, I really am excited. Listen, it was a real achievement to get her up in front of a camera too. We didn't tell her we were doing this until it was too late to back out. After she finished school, finished high school, she came to work for the city of Los Angeles in 1972. She started out at the Central Library as a clerk typist. She moved through a number of different jobs because she figured out pretty quickly that she was smarter than some of the jobs she was doing and so she'd move up to the next job. And by the time she exercised superb judgment and came to work for me in 1987, she had already worked for Councilman Finn, Councilman Ronca. Leave it or not? And Councilman, did you really? Louis Noel, I remember Louis Noel. He and I had some interesting run-ins. So she'd already worked for those three guys and she got sort of a different flavor when she came to work for the 6th District. She started out still working her way up through the clerical ranks. She started out in an administrative position with me. And when a legislative position opened up, she said to me, I think I could do this job. And I was thrilled because I knew you could do the job. And that's when I discovered Wendy. Now, is it okay if I tell this story? Okay. Most people in the city employment know this anyway. Turns out there were really, there are many facets to Audrey King. But one of them, she described to me at the time, was the party girl. And that was Wendy. And of course, she didn't let Wendy into the office. But it turns out that it's the Wendy part of her that is so good at cutting through all the garbage and getting down to the nuts and bolts of an issue and getting things taken care of. So I told her I would make her the legislative deputy if we could split it between Audrey and Wendy. So reluctantly, she agreed, but it worked out pretty well. And so she has been working for the 6th Council District ever since. After being the legislative deputy for a while, we had kind of a crisis in our field office where we really needed somebody to get into the Crenshaw community and make sure that we were doing everything we needed to do and we had to fix up some stuff that had gone wrong in the past. So I said, now, this one is, this is a Wendy part. But we'll send Audrey along too. And since then, I've forgotten what year that was. Audrey has been doing yeoman service for the 6th Council District. She takes care of everything that happens in Crenshaw, in Mar Vista, Palms, Delray Community, and in the Oakwood area of Venice. And those can be challenging, especially the Oakwood area of Venice. She gets along well with the people who are calm and reasonable and she gets along well with the other people as well because she doesn't take anything out of line. She's been very instrumental in helping to establish the Vera Davis McClendon Family Center at the old Venice Library. She helped make sure we got done the Culver Boulevard median, bike path, pedestrian walkway. She virtually runs the Targeted Neighborhood Initiative project in South Crenshaw. There are some other people who are also obviously very involved in this, but for our office, she runs it. She, on her own time, serves, she's been involved with the Black Employees Association in City Hall probably since it began. Which one of you guys started? You started, huh? Steve started. We're getting to Steve. But he dragged her into it. She is also serving now as a board member of the Crenshaw Chamber of Commerce, the West Side Center for Independent Living, the Hyde Park Organizational Partnership for Empowerment. You usually see the people from there, they call themselves Hope, which is what they're about. And she's also involved with the Phi Delta Sorority and spends her time with them as a youth advisor to the Phi teens, girls who are 13 to 18 years old who are trying to figure out, get themselves through adolescence and growing up. She's part of a real city family. Audrey is married to Steve King, who is the guy who claims to have started the Black Employees Association. And they have two daughters, Kimberly Mitchell, also a city employee. She works in contract administration. Steve is in transportation. And Kendra King, who works for Superior Court. It says county court, but it's the Superior Court. The inferior courts, we don't discuss. So this, they have been through as a family, they're very close. They've, Audrey has been mom through family crises, which there've been an unfair number. And I said at the beginning that Audrey is a role model. She's a role model because she keeps going, she takes care of business, she lives a full and happy life, but also because she keeps everybody else together in a crisis because she can do that. And take note of the fact, she started here in 1972. So we have a number of presentations for you today. First of all, your 30-year pin. I had to give you that first so I don't lose it. Then we have your certificate of commendation for being a pioneer woman. And then we have the flowers because we love you. Yep, you have to say something. You can say anything you like, I can't fire you.
Okay. I just want to say thank you very much for this honor. I felt that I really deserved it, but...
Take it anyway.
I'll take it anyway. But I really just want to say thank you. And to my family, who I really appreciate and thank. And they have been my backbone. And also to my boss, Ruth, who has, who saw something in me that I didn't see in myself. She knew that I was, I kind of like lacked confidence and she said, no, Wendy, you can do it. But she called me Audrey in the office. And also, my colleagues who are here, thank you all very much. As I was ill, they stepped in for me and I really appreciate it. And just thank you very much. And just thank you very much.
Colleagues, I understand that one of our colleagues need... no, don't need to leave. Alright, let's keep going around. Mr. Garcetti. The Honorable Eric Garcetti, council member from the thirteenth district. That's what I meant to say.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, Mr. President. I hardly need to introduce to anybody who lives in Silver Lake or Echo Park Cheryl Revkin, because she's been an activist, a caregiver, and a community cornerstone, and is also somebody who I consider a true friend. The modern-day barber in Silver Lake is Cheryl Revkin's chiropractic practice, where you can stop in, find out what's going on in the community. It is literally the center of all information, the community activists, all the useful gossip of the day comes through. But for the last thirty years, Cheryl has been that sort of spark plug for the community, somebody who really gets things, project after project started, sees them through, and improves the quality of life for everybody who lives in the area. She's originally from Chicago. She was born in nineteen... hmm, hmm. And was raised as a Unitarian. While at University of Madison, Wisconsin, she was an anti-war activist during the Vietnam War and moved right after that to Echo Park and Silver Lake. She's been in the community for over thirty years and celebrated her silver... or is celebrating a silver anniversary of her practice this year, which is incredible to have a small business have that sort of continuation really shows what love the community has for her and for her work. She helped be one of the first folks in the food co-op known as the Food Conspiracy in the Echo Park-Silver Lake area and was very active in the formation of the Echo Park-Silver Lake People's Childcare Center, where her daughter Casey, who's also here, attended. She has done so much in this community, whether it was giving free services through her own practice to people at Hollywood Sunset Free Clinic, the Clinica Oscar Romero, as a board member of the Silver Lake Improvement Association, studying grassroots food for the homeless program, her care for babies with AIDS, including her own foster care for a boy for two years, serving on the advisory board of Lacer, which many of you know, Jackie Goldberg was very involved in, one of the best after-school programs in the country. But it's also the way that she has facilitated those people who have ideas, whether it was the Silver Lake Film Festival, which celebrated its second year this year, whether it was the creation of a dog park in Silver Lake, which is really our community center, or whether it was the Queen of Silver Lake pageant last year in which... how many finalists were there? Five? Five. Four drag queens and one person who was born as a woman who took the prize, but this year the drag queens are coming back. Or the farmer's market in Silver Lake, which recently started this past year. Cheryl has been, as president of our Chamber of Commerce, which I neglected to say at the beginning, which is what we're honoring her for today, among other things, has really helped bring up the entire community. As the president of the Chamber of Commerce, she's done things from handing out seven thousand free directories to make sure that people shop locally, and you only need to drive down Sunset Boulevard in Silver Lake or Rowena or any of the great corridors and avenues that are part of the renaissance that's happening there to see the impact that Cheryl has had on the area. Whether it's the Echo Park apartment collapse that happened or after September eleven, she is that community activist that is first and foremost out there, raising money, making sure that people donate, and always reminding each and every one of us to remember our consciences. When you look at the requirements, the criteria for the Pioneer Women's Award, to live and work in the council district and contribute to the community in areas of education, business, sports, arts, science, community, health, and government, contributing to the status of women in the city of Los Angeles, involvement in philanthropic endeavors, and having performed acts of courage, it isn't just one of these, it isn't just two of these, it's all of these that Cheryl embodies. So it gives me great pride to be able to introduce her to the rest of you today, to give her the certificate of commendation from myself and from the city council and to hear from her as well. Congratulations, Cheryl.
Thank you, everyone. I want to particularly thank council member Garcetti, who first of all crowned our queen of Silver Lake. And I feel like I represent so many women in Silver Lake who are with me here today. It's a very progressive community. I invite you all to come to Echo Park and Silver Lake, escape from the mall, and support our community. I want to thank my daughter Casey for being here, Steve, Larry, Jason, everybody. I really couldn't do this without the support of everyone around me and I'm very honored today. Thank you.
And before we get to the next colleague, I think we all should give a round of applause to Veronica Hendricks from the staff of the commission, who made the breakfast possible, who made all of what we're doing today possible. She deserves a terrific, terrific round of appreciation. Thank you so much, Veronica. And now, Mr. Holden, are you... oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. The Honorable Janice Hahn, council member.
My good friend Jack Glass. I'm very honored to be congratulating my Pioneer Woman, but it's also a bittersweet moment. My Pioneer Woman, Pat Eastman, passed away on February twenty-sixth, actually just a week after she had learned that we were going to honor her. So I was going to invite up all her close friends to be with me for this. Bobby Jean Anderson, who we just approved as commissioner on the Commission of Status of Women, Edna Alwine, longtime friend of Pat, Lavina Carr, Ernestine Wilson from the Office of County Supervisor, Yvonne Burke, and Wilma Haynes from the Watts Boulevard Chamber of Commerce. Please come help honor our good friend, Pat. You know, we're all saying the same thing, but really to list all the achievements of our Pioneer Women, we really truly would be here all day. And Pat is clearly one of those. From her service in the military to her tireless dedication to the Democratic Party, Pat always put her heart and soul into anything she did and everything she touched was successful and she truly made history. During World War II, Pat served honorably in the European Theater, earning several commendations, including victory medals for good conduct and for overseas service. And when she came back as a veteran, she embarked on a career of public service that can only be called absolutely amazing and remarkable. Pat was devoted beyond passion to the Democratic Party. And over the years, Pat served on the LA County Central Committee, on the Board of the State Democratic Committee. She also served on the California Senior Legislature and she founded the Astrojet Democratic Club and served as its president for eleven years. In her community, Pat was the ultimate of a community activist. She served on the Watts Community Development Advisory Council. She's been a member of the Watts NAACP since nineteen sixty-two. She's been named a trustee emeritus of the Watts Labor Community Action Council, where she's served on the board for many years. She... her commitment to her community and the value she believed in did not go unnoticed. She had many awards and many honors over the years. She had a certificate of special congressional recognition for her outstanding service to the community in nineteen ninety-nine. She was recognized for outstanding generosity toward America's disabled veterans by the Disabled American Veterans Commander Club on three separate occasions. She is enshrined forever, among other great members of our community, on the Watts promenade of prominence, which Edna Alwine actually is the founder of our own Watts Walk of Fame. Pat was a longtime friend of the Hahn family. She worried about me my whole life. She cared about me, she prayed about me, and she did tell me that she wanted to make sure that she did not pass on until I finally got elected to the city council. So I think she was waiting for that her whole life. I'm sorry, I took so long, Pat. But I have here her dear, dear friends and I want to present each one of them with two red roses to honor the memory of really one of the greatest women I have ever known in my life and who made history in ways that this Pioneer Award really emphasized, and she went where many women still haven't gone. So, and Edna, are you going to make some remarks? Who's going to make remarks? One of you has to. Okay. Thank you for being here with me today.
I'd like to the President, also Janice Hahn and the council members. I want to personally thank Janice for her recognition of Pat Eastman, a well-deserved honor. Pat truly epitomizes what Pioneer Women are all about. And you've heard just a snippet of the things that she has done for women. I'm one of her mentees. And it's ironic, I said today that I had been confirmed on the Status of Women Commission because I had planned to come to this event for Pat prior to her death and prior to knowing that I was going to be appointed a commissioner. But I think that God has us in the place that we need to be when we need to be there. And so it is with that, I thank the council, I thank Janice Hahn, and I thank everyone here for being here to honor such a pioneer as Pat Eastman. Thank you.
go out of order. I'd like to introduce to you the esteemed council member from the third district, the Honorable Dennis Zine.
Thank you, Jack and the President and colleagues joining me. Who's this man?
It's my dad.
How you doing?
It's my son, Devin.
Devin. I knew you were a single parent in all the things that you do in the community and I was wondering if this was a stalk or stalking you. We would take care of it. Thank you. It's an honor to have with us today Don Coombs, who lives in the third district of the San Fernando Valley. And Don is the Pioneer Woman from the third district for something very, very unique. When Don was a young, young student, her sister Tara was killed in a car crash and this crash occurred at school. And as the years passed, Don decided she'd do something to help in the community and be a pioneer in establishing a safe environment. So she created a program called T-A-R-A-S, Traffic Awareness Really Achieves Safety. And while Don's a single parent, raising two children and going to school and also employed, she decides to take it upon herself to get the fifth grade class and to assemble them prior to the start of school, every day, Monday through Friday, and have them go out with the signs informing the parents about safety. And she's been doing this for five years. And this program has been instrumental in creating an air of safety within that region, within my district on Woodlake, just south of Victory Boulevard. So while Don is raising two students... Where'd you come from? You just showed up. She's raising two students as a single parent, going to school, working full-time, and doing this as a gesture of love and appreciation and remembrance of her sister and what she experienced. So we decided for her pioneering efforts in establishing this environment and the safety for these young students so they can become mature adults and leaders within our community, we would honor her for the Pioneer Woman for the third district of the West San Fernando Valley. So it's an honor for me to present to you Don Coombs and her two children and her dad. We have a resolution for you, we have flowers for you, because your consistent efforts have made a difference and made a change and you pioneered safety and remembrance of your sister, who was tragically killed in that crash a number of years ago. So the microphone's all yours and your dad's watching you and you're going to be on television, so make sure you say it right.
Thank you. Mr. President, honorable council members and especially you, Councilmen Dennis Zine.
Not Congressman.
Not Congressman this time. I'd like to thank you for honoring me and not only me, but this program that honors and recognizes a tragedy that happened to our family several years ago so that it does not happen again in our area of Woodlake Elementary in Woodland Hills. You know, last night, I went to bed, I kissed my beautiful children on the head and I got the perfect black dress out and I laid it out and hugged my perfect cat and went to bed and said, "Now this is what it's about to be a Pioneer Woman. This is perfect." And I woke up this morning, my children finding that perfect cat sitting on that black dress and I was running late and I said, "No, this is what it is to be a Pioneer Woman. You come against obstacles." I hear the word "no," "you can't" and "no, you don't" quite a bit, and I overcome them. I don't believe in them, they're just hurdles to jump over and leap over and help fight for the safety of our children, not only in our area, but we hope this problem gets adopted in most of the areas around Los Angeles. And I thank you once again for recognizing this program with my family and I thank my family for being with me today.
The Honorable, the esteemed council member from my favorite district, my neighboring district, Nate Holden.
Thank you very much, Jack. I'll step aside anytime, but then it's Zine. He's a police officer. He has two jobs. He's a police officer and a councilperson. That's the first time that ever happened in the history of the city of Los Angeles. And this way I know he will never arrest anybody because we did him a favor. In the case, Ms. Peggers? All right, how are you? Just as a member, I know each of the young women will be introduced and congratulated for being Pioneer Woman of the Year. But we know that these mothers and daughters and community leaders are pioneers. Each and every day, they just work day in and day out for their respective communities. In fact, the entire city is better off because of the efforts and hard work of these financial individuals who are women, who are doing a great job being honest today. And you know, it's my belief that hard work is always will pay off for me and for anyone else who would like to aspire for higher heights in life, to better recognition, so might. When there's a job to be done, you don't just put in eight hours a day, sometime you put in ten, twelve, fifteen, even twenty-four hours a day. I try to convince my colleagues that I even do twenty-five, but they say I don't count to it. do 25, but they say I don't count to it. That is the kind of sacrifice and devotion to duty that characterizes our 10th District Pioneer Woman of the Year, Sheri Ellen Peggars. While she has goals that many seem to be impossible, Peggars' goal is to have as many young girls from age four to 14 as possible from the inner-city attend college. She believes it will cut down, of course, we know that, on gang violence, although the real gangsters are not the girls, teenage pregnancy, and the sense of hopefulness that so many young girls and young women experience today in our society. The 10th District Pioneer Woman started helping people when she was young. Hey, this is a tragic incident when it occurred. At age 14, she tried to break up a fight and ended up being stabbed by a victim, but you know what? Did not courage our Pioneer Woman for the 10th District, discourage her. That didn't discourage her at all. In fact, it helped her to understand what we had to do in order to get the young people straight. She was more motivated then than ever. Now she's helping hundreds of young girls through a sports and education program in the Council District 10. She began the girls' basketball league five years ago with eight players. They faced many challenges and setbacks however. Hard work and determination kept our Pioneer Woman of the Woman going. Today, the league can boast of having nearly 300 young girls participating. Isn't that great? The league is based at Rancho San Diego Recreation Center. The girls receive coaching, tutoring, mentoring, computer training, career planning, and college prep work. The program builds character, builds positive self-esteem, develops good citizenship, and they say sportsmanship, but sportsmanship. I think something like that, we would make a new one. Two of the girls from the first group will begin college in the fall. One is going to UCLA for R.A., you're not gonna like that, too. An academic scholarship. The other to San Diego State as an athletic scholarship. San Diego State, that's what both my sons attend. It's a good college. Along with helping young girls achieve success, the 10th District Pioneer Woman of the Year is a wife for 20 years to Marvin Peggars. I mean, she came, they do it together, give him a hand also. She's the mother of a 17-year-old daughter and a 14-year-old son. She is a software specialist at the law firm of, and listen to this, Reardon &amp; McKenzie. Hey, 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 he almost became governor too, dog, he could've gone up there. Colleagues, please welcome the 10th District Pioneer Woman of the Year, Sheri Peggars, a hard worker and a true community activist. And we have a nice, you know, I am the most senior member of the council, but Mercy isn't here. He's the oldest, but I'm the most senior. And so I just want to do something especially outstanding for you, Ms. Peggars, because you're such a hard worker, number one. Number two, because of term limits, I won't be here next year, but I'm gonna double this next year for the next person, you can come again if you like. Also, you know, if you have a sweet tooth, in the 10th District, no, we know that, we make a note of the fact that this candy company sells candy all around the world. And guess where they make it? 10th District. Sees Candy. Free advertisement. And of course, your nice certificate of commendation. Give her a big hand.
I'd just like to say thank you, I'm honored to be here representing Nate Holden's 10th District as the Pioneer Woman of the Year. I'd like to give a special honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who gives me the strength and the ability to be able to represent and have tireless energy in the community. I'd also like to thank my family, because without them, I wouldn't be able to invest those hours in the community with two teenage kids. Like to give a special thanks to my husband, who is my right hand and who, without him, I would not be able to represent on behalf of GBL Sports and Technology. Also, I'd like to thank my mother who's here with me today. As most of you know, the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree, so I'd like to thank her for teaching me as a young person to have good community relations and to be involved in my community. I'd also like to thank Rancho San Diego, the staff there, for their tireless energy in dealing with the kids and all of my great ideas and allowing me to run the center and to have a thousand-plus girls coming through that center. It's actually grown from eight young ladies to 300, 400 girls a season, and I stand here today representing over a thousand-plus girls in the inner-city who are out there staying off the streets, getting good tutoring and going on and getting into good high schools and furthering their education in college. I'd also like to thank all the people from my job, all the jobs that I've ever had who have represented me and donated money on behalf of our program. Without you, things like that, wouldn't be able to run. Again, I say thank you on behalf of everybody involved in GBL Sports and Technology. Thanks to all my directors, Alicia and Andre Evans, who are here today representing GBL Sports and Technology. And if it's anybody I forgot, thank you very much.
Colleagues, I'd like to introduce to you council member from my favorite neighboring district, the Honorable Tom Labange from the 4th District.
It's a wonderful day, and I'd like to call on Dr. Rosemary White to join us this morning here, a resident of the 4th District from the great neighborhood of the Valley Village. Rosemary. Rosemary is very special to many, many people, but she's very special to me as someone in the community who has done a great deal for others in their greatest time of need. Dr. White is a specialist and is a member of the American Red Cross Disaster Mental Health Team. Often, Dr. White will get a call in the middle of the night or page somewhere in the day, will be asked to leave her family to go somewhere on the west coast to assist in families in traumas such as tragedies of airplane accidents or other major emergencies to deal with the families when there's multiple casualties. She's led efforts to provide counseling services for families and the service personnel affected by these disasters. She was particularly involved in the events following September 11th where her services were greatly needed. She works throughout the community with various agencies on suicide prevention, which is something that is extremely important to someone who's in such a time of need. She has the skill, she has the love, she has the heart and soul to help people at that very critical time. But above and beyond that very important role, she cares greatly for our environment. She is one of the leaders of the Sierra Club, she's the chairperson of the Danger Species Task Force, and she's so involved with the Canada Goose Project, which is a wonderful project where the migration of great Canadian geese comes south on their way to Mexico, and they make their home in parts of Los Angeles, including the great 12th District, home of Hal Berndsen and the Chatsworth Nature Preserve, that great venue where it's so peaceful out there, and these birds find a home to rest and settle. And of all places that I've been in the city of Los Angeles, one of the most pristine and beautiful is what you've done at Chatsworth Nature Preserve and working with Councilman Berndsen and all the other environmental groups. But that little pond there off of the road where these birds come and sit and rest, and then they move over to Encino on their way, and there'll be 1,200 there, and you count them in the morning. And then they make their way to Silver Lake where the other day I saw 22 of them, right above Rowena Avenue in Silver Lake District, Eric. 22 Canadian geese flying right over in such a beautiful formation, visiting the Silver Lake Reservoir. That project, the Canadian, Canada Goose Project, in preserving the migratory Canadian goose is so important for the work that you do and why today you stand here with your family to be honored with other great women in Los Angeles in your award of a 2002 Pioneer Woman of the Year. Please welcome Dr. Rosemary White.
Oh, thank you very much, Tom, and the city council, this is a great honor. I want to introduce to you and to thank some people that have been very significant in my life. My beautiful handsome son, who is also successful, Joshua, and two very dear friends of mine that have helped me a great deal. Rhona Cohen, who is head of a corporation herself and very distinguished woman, and Dr. Benita Worth from the American Red Cross Disaster Response Team. And these people have been significant in my life. I see Hal Berndsen sitting there, and I'm very proud that Tom Labange mentioned a lovely, lovely place that is going to be a beautiful area for education and for all the citizens of Los Angeles, Chatsworth Nature Preserve. And I hope that Councilman Berndsen's office will continue to help us save that place. Thank you so very much.
These sunflowers represent the greatness of you in the form of a flower, because you bring sun to everybody every day. God bless you, Rose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. And before we get to, briefly before we get to my colleague Ms. Misakowski, I know there's some students here that Mr. Reyes wanted to acknowledge. Some students?
Students.
You wait, okay. The Honorable Cindy Misakowski, Councilwoman from the 11th District, my favorite neighboring district.
Members of the council, it's always so interesting to hear the stories, and the stories, I love the name of this award, the Pioneer Women, because in fact, as we hear about these women and the different courses they have taken in their life from their youth to today, they really are such incredible role models for our young girls. Similarly, with my nominee, Helen Etrianorin. Helen is a native Californian who was born in Santa Maria and attended USC, majoring in advertising. She got out of school, went into the field, and then all of a sudden realized that maybe advertising wasn't what she really wanted to do. She could write, she liked talking about people and stories and writing, so she walked into Look magazine and said she wanted a job. They gave her a job, and she, from 1949 to 1956, worked at Look magazine, that incredible magazine that's so wonderful in our history as we look back at it. She took stories on people, people interest, and other kinds of humorous stories, and actually, she was writing on the side as well. So one day she decided, based on a lot of what her boss said and finding some of her writing, that maybe she should go, take that skill and do something else with it. So she decided to go out and become a freelance writer. She is one of the early members of the Hollywood Women's Press Club as a freelancer, what she had done, and working with women in incredible roles from Hollywood, talking about the story, projecting Hollywood throughout the world. That's what her career has been. Then there's her, there's her community side. In 1991, she joined the Tarzana Property Owners Association and very quickly became a member of the board, and soon after that, became president, where she has served for a number of years as president. And Helen not only helps nurture that organization, but she's never given up the idea of liking people, liking ideas, and dreaming. Let me tell you just one story. A few years ago, Helen said, "Wouldn't it be nice if we could get, in this community, support to create a community center? Wouldn't it be nice if we could take a site on Ventura Boulevard that's prominently in the center of our community in Tarzana and get some angel to donate money and get the community to rally about it, around it?" She wrote that story, she wrote that idea in the Tarzana Property Owners Association newsletter, and an angel came forward. Someone from the community said they wanted to help, they wanted to donate money. From that came a Tarzana Community Foundation, and I think just next month, the community with, based on Helen's idea, is going to close escrow on that piece of property on Ventura Boulevard and make it a community center for youth, for children, for drop-ins, for folks who just want to be part of a great site on Ventura with wonderful old trees and really a core of the city. She also, that's right, she's actually got a lot of people here, I think she was surprised today, that from her Tarzana Property Owners Association, a number of her friends and board members came down to surprise her because they enjoy her leadership, they enjoy her friendship, and they enjoy what she does for the community. She is really a special person. My staff, both when I was on staff in Council District 11, and my staff now, love this woman and love working with her and love working with the community for all that she does. So Helen, thank you.
I had a speech, you don't need to hear it. I just want to say that this honor is especially meaningful to me because it came from someone that I admire totally, and that is my councilwoman Cindy Misakowski. She has guided me and helped open up a world for me, because when I joined the board of Tarzana Property Owners Association, I knew nothing about politics or what makes a city work. I had, in earlier years with my work in Hollywood, I was very active with the Hollywood Women's Press Club, and then helped found the Hollywood Women's Press Club Scholarship Foundation, and was president of that for three years. The main thing is that giving something to the community helps you work with people, and as you stress, that's my pleasure, but it makes you feel good. And if I had to do it regularly, daily, at a certain hour every day for pay, I'd never show up. It's just fun what I do. Thank you. Thanks, all of you.
Mr. President, colleagues, I'd like to introduce you to the President of the Los Angeles City Council, the representative from the 7th District, the Honorable Alex Padilla, who is making his way towards the stage.
It's my great honor to present this year's Pioneer Woman of the Year award to, from the 7th Council District, to Ida Kinney. We're gonna share some stories this morning, but let me begin by saying, you know, this is my third year now. is my third year now recognizing somebody from my district with this award. And over those three years, there's times where I've made the decision, thought about a Woman of the Year, looking at a woman who's accomplished a lot. Just in the last 12 months, there's times when I think about selecting a pioneer woman who has done a lot in the last several years. There's times that I've thought about, well, who have I worked with, not just politically but in the community, very closely. But this year I chose to select a woman who has not only done a lot in the last 12 months, who has not only done a lot in the last several years, not only someone that I have worked with who has been a supporter of mine, but really someone who has dedicated her entire life and done some significant work in a number of areas, from civil rights to church to the labor movement, to serving seniors. Ida Kinney was born in Lafayette, Arkansas and is the, her parents are descendants of slaves. Her first role model when it came to activism was her grandfather, who served on the school board in a segregated school district. And one of the stories that I want to share today is that her grandfather was very proud of her one day when she was walking on the way to school and she distinguished herself at an early age by biting the ear of a little white boy who used to walk on the black side of the road only to push some of the black kids into the mud. That was activism at a very early age. But in 1922, the Kinney family found themselves moving to California, first Santa Monica and a few years later to the Van Nuys area when Ida married Carl Bynon. 10 years after their marriage, Mr. Bynon died and Ida went to work for the first time. She was very well educated, but her husband did not want her to have to work. So while they were married, she didn't, but she had a solid education and after his passing, she went to work. She got her start at Lockheed, went on to work for McDonnell Douglas afterwards and was part of a trainee and a trainer at Burbank High School. She was one of the founders who helped build the first black church in Pacoima, which stands to this day the Greater Trinity Baptist Church, where she is an active member and has been active on the board. She's an organizer in the community, a leader in the community and is very, very revered by many senior citizens out in the northeast San Fernando Valley. She currently serves in the County Commission on Aging. One of the other stories I want to share with you this morning is the following. You know, when I was running for office, the first time a couple of years ago, we all sort of, you know, pay visits out of respect to homeowners association, to chambers of commerce, to other recognized leaders in our community. Well, Mother Kinney is not one of the most visible community leaders today, but it was very clear as I was making my rounds that if you're thinking of running for office and you're thinking of winning, you have to go pay a respect to Mother Kinney. And so I went one fateful day in Pacoima to Mother Kinney's house, happened to be her birthday that day, and we had a great, great conversation. She proceeded to tell me this story of the time that she was working at Lockheed. The time she was working at Lockheed, it was after the war and it was a great thing for women as they were breaking into the workplace. But the story she told me was one about organized labor. She was standing there in a now diversified, integrated assembly line and she, as a black woman, was working alongside white women and getting paid more than the white women. And as I was listening to the story, I kind of scratched my head and I said, wait a minute. I thought some of the problems with segregation and discrimination were was unfair treatment and lesser treatment by people of color. So she proceeded to explain to me how she would go around showing her paycheck to her white counterparts and how she was making more money. And the reason for that was the union of those workers would not accept black people into the union. And so by her educating and her creating the awareness amongst her colleagues, she was able to break down the barriers within organized labor to further the equal treatment of people of color within the labor movement. It was a very, it was a story that many people do not know, but it was a story that I think is one of many stories that gives just a little taste, just a little sample of the kind of woman and leader and champion that Mother Kinney has been for her entire life, from the labor movement to civil rights, to the founding of a church, to leading and organizing seniors who revere her to this day. It is for all those accomplishments over the years and her ongoing activism in the northeast San Fernando Valley, in the 7th Council District specifically, that colleagues with all sincerity and genuineness, I say it is my honor and I'm proud to recognize Mother Ida B. Kinney as a Pioneer Woman of the Year.
Thank you kindly. It's a great pleasure to be here. I'm very proud of all of you. I watch your voting record in order that we can keep you straight in doing things correctly for the senior citizens who's paid our dues, we've paid our dues. And I'm very, very happy to be here today. This is a great surprise. I've been here many times, fighting for many things. I've lived in the San Fernando Valley 60 years, so I'm a pioneer.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Colleagues, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Jan Perry, Representative of the 9th District.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilmember Weiss. Before I get started with the next presentation, I would like to recognize Tom Kame, who is the President of the Japanese Chamber of Commerce for Southern California. Stand up and he's brought some, some young people here today from Japan. They are called the Ashinaga Students. The Japanese Chamber of Commerce of Southern California annually hosts students who have lost one or both of their parents due to illness or accidents and unfortunately mostly automobile accidents. Today we have here from Japan, Kanemaru Daisuke, Ishijimi Kiyotada, Tawaka Sakai, Balu Masaru Rui, Kamugai Chika, Yoshida Ayaka and Kono Kyoyo. While in Los Angeles, they're going to spend their time doing volunteer work for Japanese retirement homes and they will return back to Japan on Sunday. Thank you to the chamber for letting us have this opportunity to meet these fine young people.
Thank you, Jan, for receiving these students. The chamber has been hosting these students for the last three years, 13 years, and this year we have seven students and this is the third week that they're staying with us. So I appreciate your recognizing them and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now I have a very special lady I want to bring forward, Ms. Juanita Tate and her, her, two of her biological children, one of many adopted children, I am sure. Once you get to know Juanita, you automatically become her child. Juanita's a special person and she has an amazing resume and she was born in Philadelphia, has a degree in fashion design and pattern making from Philadelphia College of Textiles and attended the Development Training Institute in Baltimore, Maryland, where she studied housing development and I suspect this is what has brought her to this day. Her, her reputation is legendary. The amount of housing that she has built and established for the residents of South Los Angeles is absolutely astounding. But what's amazing about Juanita Tate is her boundless energy, her capacity to mentor, to teach and to reach back and help others who are behind her to get a leg up or to do better or to improve their lives. I know she's absolutely always done that for me and for so many others. She's touched so many lives. She's, she's a proud mother of three children and she raised those children on her own. She has seven grandchildren and I know she adores each one of them. And it seems like even though we have a certificate and flowers for you today, Juanita, that's hardly enough for all that you've done for us and so I want to say this is why she is my Pioneer Woman for 2002. Congratulations.
I would just like to take this opportunity to say thank you to the Councilwoman who has become very, very special in the lives of the people in the 9th Council District because she stands for justice for all. I'll never forget her slogan of fighting for our fair share and Jan, I can really say that I'm proud to be associated with you because you are fighting for our fair share. But you're only as good as the people that work for you and I'd just like to introduce my son and daughter and my staff person that handles our housing. I've learned that no matter where I go, what I do, they're always there for me and they're always there to keep the names of concerned citizens growing and I listen to people talk about the youth that are in college, that's a part of what we do at our organization. We have 15 youth that are in colleges all the way around the country and we're very, very proud of them because without a president, our youth don't have a future. So my, my goal is to work for the young people in our community and our senior citizens because I'm a senior citizen myself. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss, before you continue, the chair, I'd like to recognize Mr. Garcetti.
Chair, Mr. Weiss, I just wanted to, before the Council President leaves, it's his 29th birthday today, so I wanted to wish him a happy birthday on behalf of the entire council for his last year in his twenties. Good year to have, a very happy birthday to you.
I understand, President Padilla, that Mr. Garcetti has written a special song in honor of your birthday and when you leave the chambers, he's going to perform it. You can watch it tonight on Channel 35. Looking forward to that. Colleagues, I'd like to introduce--
With its chair, I recognize Mr. Labange from his Perry seat.
Thank you. Happy birthday, Alex. It's so important. I would like, Eric, to roll up the 88s and real quick and put another candle on your birthday cake. Happy birthday.
Colleagues, I'd like to ask the Honorable Ed Reyes, the Councilmember from the 1st District, to come forward. He has some extraordinary students here from the Northridge Learning Center who've been waiting extraordinarily patiently. You guys have been great today. You really have. Here's Councilmember Reyes.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Weiss. Council President, Madam President, colleagues, it's my pleasure to introduce, it's my honor for this year's Pioneer Woman of the Year, Dr. Martina Ayala for her leadership in limited education. Dr. Ayala has worked as an educator in private Catholic schools, public and charter schools for the past 25 years. She has also produced various films and videos that have received recognition and awards from the film industry and community for its positive portrayal of Latinos on the screen. Dr. Ayala has focused on issues affecting the education and advancement of Latino community. The title of her master's thesis was Alternative Chicano Education. Upon completing her master's thesis, Dr. Ayala pursued doctoral coursework concurrently at the University of San Francisco and Stanford University. Her research of international education has taken her to places abroad such as Cuba, where she has researched the Cuban education system after the collapse of the communist government in Russia. Dr. Ayala has returned to her childhood home in Montecito Heights upon completion-- thank you-- upon her completion of her doctoral degree in international multicultural education and converted her home into a unique licensed family childcare. As Dr. Ayala entered the field of childcare, she became aware of the critical need to organize childcare providers to ensure that they had a voice and play a significant role in local and statewide policies affecting childcare services. She helped organize the childcare providers of Northeast Los Angeles and co-founded the California Childcare Providers and Educators Association, which promotes and supports quality childcare programs for children in Northeast Los Angeles. In June 2001, Dr. Ayala and her husband, Alex Balmaseda, founded the Northeast Family Center, taking the personal savings and the parents' retirement money to establish the Northeast Family Center and located in the community where they were raised. The center's mission is to provide quality education, art, music, health and culturally appropriate programs to families. The center operates five unique programs, Northeast Academy, Academic Tutoring, Youth and Adult Literacy Program, Community Learning Center, and Espalda de Valio. Dr. Ayala has initiated the following programs in my district. The First Family Literacy Night, Ramona Hall, the First Annual Kids Fair at Sycamore Park, the Annual Childcare Conference at Occidental College, the Annual Neighborhood Fair, the Annual World Culture and Music Festival. As a resourceful person, Dr. Ayala is introducing City Hall to members of her school. She is accompanied by her teachers, students, as well as her parents and family members. Dr. Ayala, it's a pleasure to present this certificate combination as pioneer and these flowers because this is the kind of effort that will enhance our future as a whole city. Thank you very much.
It is an honor for me to live and work in the community that is honoring me today. I am very proud to represent Council District 1. I have hope in Councilman Ed Reyes and that he will continue to cause an effect, change in our community. It's very important for all of us, specifically for women of color, to act as agents of social change and continue to work for the betterment of our community, specifically children. Our children are our future. It is important for us to work through that vehicle to transform. I am very proud of my students that are here today, of the parents and family members that are here because we are not waiting for someone else to do something for us. We are doing it for ourselves and that is very important, an important message that I want all our children to hear. Do not wait for anyone to do anything for you. If you want to see something done in your community, get up and do it. And if it means that you have to sell tacos in the street, you're going to do it because we care about where we live and we're very proud of our community. Thank you so much for honoring me as a Pioneer Woman of 2002, Council District 1.
Colleagues, this is the moment you've all been waiting for and I know it's the moment he's been waiting for. The Honorable Hal Berenson.
I'd like to ask Sue Sampson and her family to come up, please.
Members of the council, it's my distinct pleasure today to honor a true Pioneer Woman from the 12th District. Her and her family, who I've known for more years than I probably either one of us want to, want to talk about, has been an outstanding leader in so many areas of our community that it's difficult. And I'm not going to be long-winded here, but I am just going to talk about a few of the things that Sue has done. State Board of Occupational Therapists, which she is a commissioner at present, LA Department of Transportation, VP Board of Commissioners, Licensed Marital, Family, Children, Childhood Counseling and State Examiner, Children at Risk, Clinical Director, NVF Counseling Center, Chairperson, California Psychological Examining Commission, Associate Community Psychological Services, Associate San Fernando Counseling Center, Group Leader, Hathaway House for Abused Children. It goes on and on. Memberships and associations, California Board of Occupational Therapy, California Association of Marriage and Family Therapists, LA Department of Transportation, which she was-- L.A. Department of Transportation, which she was commissioner and president, University of California Board of Regents Advisory Board Member, Assemblywoman Boland's Advisory Council Board Member, Buck McKeon Childcare Task Force. This goes on and on. I could probably do this for the next fifteen minutes, but I'm not going to do that. Instead, I'm going to talk a little bit about these personal associations that I've had with Sue and Vic and her family. I can tell you that she served on our Citizens Advisory Council in Northridge and served on our planning committee for twenty-some years now. I can tell you that her and her husband, operating the Don Ricardo's Restaurants, including the Northridge Center branch, has opened their doors to all kinds of community activities and sponsored luncheons there for them for things involving the community at their cost. I can tell you that on Christmas and Thanksgiving, they fed literally thousands of people for free, people that were in need and didn't have the means for to bring their families down, to be fed on a holiday. This is the type of dedication that this family has given to our community. And I just want to, I think it's my distinct pleasure to thank Sue and Vic and to honor her today as a pioneer woman for the twelfth district. I can't think of anybody more deserving than I know.
I just want to say that I really, truly don't believe that I deserve this award, because to me, volunteering and doing this is part of my life, and it gives me a reason for being. And I have a great role model, my husband Vic Sampson. He is one that taught me to give back to the community. I am very honored to be representative of District Twelve and Hal Burnson nominated me. Thank you very much.
Colleagues, and Mr. Burnson, I'd like you to meet the honorable, the patient, a man whose entire life has been spent in the service of forgiveness and a man who will forgive me, the Honorable Mark Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, Mr. Weiss, I knew that there would be a point in time when the philosophy of nonviolence would make sense, and it does today. And it certainly ought to be celebrated on our occasion to salute Women's History Month. Mr. Weiss calls to our attention when it was, became a reality in the, our city, celebrating for many, many years. International Women's Day launched decades ago. Copenhagen has worked its way around the world so that women who yearn for dignity, for equality, for liberation, wherever they may find themselves during this month of March are the focus of attention. We take this opportunity to celebrate the pioneering spirit of women who've taken on tough challenges of improving the quality of life for their own families, their communities, and the city at large. And it's with that in mind that I'm proud to present my nominee for this year's Pioneer Woman of the Award, Ms. Dorothy Wong. And it's because of Dorothy's vision and leadership that the institution, the environment, the space known as the Village Green community located in the eighth council district in the shadow of the Baldwin Hills, Baldwin Vista community, was declared a national historic landmark in January of last year. And for those of you who aren't familiar with Village Green, it's a unique urban environment that has remained a somewhat pristine environment for over a half century. It was groundbreaking at the time that it was built and remains this green lush environment that can teach us all a lesson or two about how to plan and design a rich urban environment where a community can come together and be precisely that, a community that is indeed a special place. The fact that Village Green is now recognized as a national landmark is because Dorothy Wong devoted six years of her life to that campaign. She began this journey as what might be considered an amateur urban design expert. Imagine that. Through the years, she earned, she armed herself with the necessary skills to see this task through its completion. She is an educator by training, having earned her PhD in instructional technology from the University of Southern California. But she put her career on hold to some extent and took her teaching and research skills to work on this rather extraordinary project. In preparation for presenting her case to have her community recognized by the National Park Service, Dr. Wong completed courses through USC's Summer Preservation Program, the California Preservation Foundation, and the Los Angeles Conservancy. A national historic landmark is not easy to come by, as some of you already know. Just to put this in perspective, only three percent of buildings listed on the National Register of Historic Places ever become official landmarks. At the fall two thousand hearing in Washington DC, there were twenty-six nominations presented, three of which were from the state of California. The Village Green nomination was the only one from California that ultimately passed. It should be noted that the Village Green nomination was one of the two that was prepared by those that were not considered to be professionals in that area. These are persons who are dedicated, community activists, and have an intense interest in the quality of life, as is the case with Dorothy Wong. Her commitment is a stellar example of bridging, bringing together a broad-based cadre of stakeholders to make a difference in the life of our city and that particular community. All of us here in Los Angeles can benefit from her diligent efforts. And so I'm proud to call Dorothy Wong, a constituent of the eighth district, call her as one who has shown extraordinary commitment and pleased to present her with the Pioneer Woman of the Year Award for the year 2002. Dorothy?
This nationally significant project, the Village Green National Historic Landmark, was only made possible by tremendous local support. First, I want to acknowledge the people at the Village Green who voted unanimously to begin work on this project in nineteen ninety-five and supported it consistently during the long six-year process with the U.S. Department of Interior. And at the fall hearing in the year two thousand, the U.S. Department of Interior recorded no objections from the more than five hundred homeowners at the Village Green. Second, I want to acknowledge the long and loyal support of Councilman Mark Ridley Thomas, who began working with us on this project in nineteen ninety-four. His outstanding work in the eighth district represent the ideals that made the Village Green a national historic landmark.